Here, I promise.
I have to call you young because I don't want to call you a.
Are we, we're missing Sal?
I bet you didn't hit the 6:30 one.
Yeah, but we've got a forum, so we can go ahead and start.
Yeah, yeah, whenever you're ready.
All right, so I am going to call the final budget hearing to order and dispense with the pledge and the invitation until the regular meeting. Okay? So it's all yours.
All right, the purpose of the presentation tonight in this public hearing is to adopt the final millage rate and adopt the final budget for the town of Oakland for FY 2022. The presentation outline is the presentation of the millage rate, and at that point, I'm going to read through the resolution for the millage. I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, for public comments, and then we'll go into the actions to approve the resolution. Just as a matter of point, this was advertised on the statute on Friday. It has to be between two days and five days prior to the meeting. So it was in Friday's paper. So the first thing I'm going to talk about is the millage rate. I'm going to go to the slide, and then I'll read through the resolution. So essentially, the current millage rate for FY 2020 was 6.5. Commission approved that millage rate to go on to the trim notices. The commissioners also approved that millage at the first public hearing of 6.5, and that's being recommended for the final public hearing is 6.5. Again, the rollback rate for the millage is 6.1952, and that is the millage without new construction that would bring in the same amount of revenues as the previous year. And the recommended rate as a percent change of the rollback rate is 4.92%. And that's part of what gets calculated through the forms that we use from the property praiser and the state. So I'm going to read through the resolution real quick, and then we can open it up for a public hearing. I just want to make sure we get everything on the record that we need to as far as this extra requirements. So this is Resolution 2020-08, a resolution of the town of Oakland, Florida, levying the ad valorem property tax millage rate for municipal purposes on all taxable property within the town for the fiscal year beginning February 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021, and providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. Whereas Florida law requires the town commission of the town of Oakland, Florida, to pass an ordinance or resolution levying the millage rate for ad valorem property taxes for municipal purposes on all taxable property within the town limits of the town of Oakland, Florida, for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021. And whereas Florida law requires said ordinance or resolution to state the millage rate to be levied and also to state the percentage by which the millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate as computed pursuant to Florida law. Whereas the town of Oakland, whereas the town commission for the town of Oakland, Florida, has duly considered the budgetary requirements of the town, has adopted a tentative millage or tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021, based on a millage rate of 6.50 mils on the taxable property within the town, and acted in accordance with the terms, provisions, and procedures contained in Section 200.065 of Florida statutes. And I'll go through these recitals real quick, or these points. The recitals are true and correct and incorporated herein by this reference. The ad valorem property tax millage rate for municipal purposes to be levied on the taxable property within the town limits in the town of Oakland, Florida during the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021, is hereby set at the rate of 6.50 mils, the percentage by which this millage rate exceeds the rollback rate of 6.1952, and is 4.92%. It is 4.92%. The tax collector is directed to proceed with the collection enforcement of the taxes levied herein as authorized by law. The town clerk is directed to forward copies of this resolution to the property praiser, the county tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue. All sections are parts of sections of the town code that conflict with this resolution or appeal. To the extent of such conflict, or the provisions of this resolution are deemed to be severable. If any section, sentence, clause, or phrase of this resolution shall be for any reason beheld to be invalid or unconstitutional, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining sections, sentences, clauses, and phrases of the resolution, but shall remain in effect, it being the legislative intent that this resolution shall stand notwithstanding the invalidity of any part. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage and adoption by the town commission of the town of Oakland, Florida. So just to make sure that it's on the record. So with this, I'll pass it back to you, Mayor, for a public comment, and then we can go into the next section of approving the resolution.
So first, do we have, I mean, we've talked about, this will be the third time we've talked about this. Do we have any questions or comments at the table? Or I need a motion, please?
I'm making a motion to accept Resolution 2020-08 as presented.
Oh, second. I'm going to put that next slide up, at least to test them.
Okay. And when we say that that's 4% more.
So the 6.5 is 4.92% above the rollback rate of 6.19.
And I understand that, but for anybody that is listening in, that doesn't, that's ad valorem, that doesn't cover the rest of the budget, which sales taxes are down, and we do not know what the impact of that is. So I think we're doing, we're just being very careful this year to see what the impacts are. And we are essentially, you know, passing a budget that is fairly flat.
Yeah, I'll speak a little bit to the differences from the last.
So if there's no questions or comments at the table, we have a motion in a second. Is there any questions or comments from anyone that is joining us virtually because we don't have any attendees in the room? Any hands up, Alicia?
Mayor, I see none.
Thank you. All right, I'll bring it back to the table. All in favor?
All right, so the next thing on the agenda, I'm going to just go through, and this is the same thing that we talked about at the last meeting, so I'm just quickly going to go through these slides, and then we'll bring up the total budget and the resolution associated with that for approval. So again, the things the staff looked at when we were putting together the budget, but the principles essentially was analysis of the millage rate. Again, we were looking at those opportunities to reduce the millage rate, and millage rate had been reduced the previous two years. Working on, because of all the uncertainty that's out there, working on essentially a status quo operational budget, setting aside adequate reserves, and then planning for infrastructure projects. So as far as the budget, the general fund budget is a little over $6.3 million. Again, property values increased by about 17% within the town, although that being new construction. Again, the recommendation was not to reduce the millage rate, and we have an increase in reserves in the general fund, where we had about $20,000 from the previous year to about $650,000, and that was shown as part of the audit presentation in August. Some of the budget highlights as far as the increases to the general fund, again, our Orange County Fire Rescue funding is formula-based. It increased by about $120,000, and that's per the interwoven agreement that we have with Orange County for fire services. So property values go up, what we have to pay for fire services also goes up, but that also means that they are serving more households. So it's kind of a, you know, as their services grow, the cost grows. It includes funding for salary increases based on performance appraisal, so 3% for town staff, and we included 5% for the Oakland Police Department. It includes increases to health insurance rates, and it does include the taking on the, and bringing in the Oakland Nature Preserve staff, and funding two of those positions as a long-term way for the stability of the Oakland Nature Preserve. And the other thing that was also included was an operating budget for the Health, Orange Arts and Heritage Center. Some of the changes from July, and I've gone into too much detail. We did update the sales tax revenue estimates, but again, as the mayor said, sales tax revenues are expected to be down significantly, again, due to everything that's going on with the COVID-19 pandemic and the uncertainty in the economy, which is part of the reason that we wanted to hold tight with the village for next year. Again, I said it before, there will be opportunities for the town to consider reducing the millage in the future as some of this commercial construction happens along 50 and with the new apartment complex. It did include a change in the administrative services manager to become a director. Included an additional 1% in the budget to work on some opportunities for matching as we move into the new retirement. And we did do an increase to the Oakland Police Department retirement, to bring them all closer to their peers in other municipalities. The next thing on the agenda or on the presentation here is utility fund budget. So it's a little over $4 million, and this is where some of the increases come in. We do have three, we have had a significant increase in revenue, both in wastewater and water. We do have three grant projects that are included in this, so this is money that we spend and will be reimbursed, but we have the budget for these things, and that's close to $1 million, and the CBPG and FDP Septic to Sewer Conversion Project. We've got the list station five, which is the 2017, 2018 appropriation. There's about $400,000 left in that appropriation. That should start construction next week, I believe. And then we've got the 2021 appropriation that became available on July 1st of 250,000. That's to take where that list station five is and extend the force main down. It doesn't get us the list station six built, but that's something that we're working on as we put that project together. But that's $250,000 that's in the budget, so that's almost $1.6 million just in grants. It does, you know, we do have staff that are paid for out of the utility fund, so it includes that same 3% increase and the increase to insurance. And again, we've got a very healthy reserve, and that's one of the big increases with the budget, going back to the general fund, is that increase in reserves. So that does show up when you look at last year's budget, too, this year's budget. The next part of this is the impact fees. And so we'll start with the water impact fees. We've got a number of projects on here. So with the water system, you can see, and we're looking at where we're at with impact fees, what we've collected in the past, what we expect to collect next year, and then we've got some projects slotted in here. The utility project is a rebudget from the current year that was not completed. And then the two big projects in there are the water well, water well number three, and the, those capacity improvements is actually the alternative water study project. So we've got money in there, and those were both in the water master plan that the commission saw recently, and those are beginnings of those two projects of getting those going. We are looking to do some grant opportunities with that alternative water supply with the stormwater harvesting on that, but this gets things going as far as getting that design going. On the wastewater system side, we've got the, just some capacity improvements with the CBPG. We've got a little bit of money in there to make sure we can get that project going, things that may not be covered under the CBPG project funding. And then we have a developer's agreement on the lift station that's over at Longleaf. Is that lift station four?
Yes.
Was built to a much bigger capacity than what they needed for that particular development. And so per the development agreement, we've got some true enough that we need to do with that project. So this is just budgeted at this point until we get that worked out with the developer. And you can see in both of those, we've got reserves for future projects. Again, that water master plan will help guide what those future projects are going to be. On the parks and recreation side, we've got, we've taken in some impact fees from the apartment complex project that really boosted what those revenues are, and we've got some projects slotted in here. A lot of those have to do with Spirit Park, both the sports courts and the playgrounds. I've started conversations with Orange County, actually had a call this afternoon on what we can do to move forward with the playgrounds and how we can go through that process, getting some information from them. One of the other things is the Sadler Avenue Trail Extension, so where it ends in Longleaf, taking that project and moving it down the sidewalk right away that we have. The Jake Boss Pier improvements, which would be making that dock ADA accessible. And then until we close out the Arts and Heritage Project, we do have a marker for the debt service. Hopefully, we'll get that closed down here before too long, the next couple of months, and some paperwork we have to do for the reimbursements. And then we've got reserves for future projects. Law enforcement, the big thing with that one is we are looking to move forward with equipping the officers with body cameras. Done a few diligence on that, and Chief has worked through policies and putting all that together, and we'll be moving forward with that over the next couple of months of equipping the officer. And the.
Can I editorialize for one second?
Absolutely. Good, ma'am.
For Chief and your behalf, I guess, maybe. And Sal, it's no big deal because you've heard this twice.
Okay.
It's not like this is new to you.
Sorry, I'm late.
Nothing has changed. Fair same presentation. And you wrote that yourself, didn't you?
What's that?
The presentation. It's very good.
Yes.
Good, I'm glad. I thank you so much.
Absolutely.
No, but to editorialize on body cams, you know, it sounds like a simple request, and it's not. It's expensive, and we want to make sure we do it right because, you know, you have to hire, if I'm right, you have to hire a company to review footage. You have, I mean, there's more to it than just buying body cams and saying, go use these.
You've got to have all the things in place that you need for the body cams, from the policies to the public records request process, to who's going to host the data, and there's a lot of things that go into that. And we're at a point now where, you know, it's time for us to, we're moving in, you know, we have a small department, but we've got a lot of growth going on, and we've got the resources now to be able to move forward with this at this time, so it's a good time.
It's, I mean, it's something we should be, we should be looking at and we should be doing, but I just want, I just want people to understand that it's not go buy them and get to using them. It's, there's a lot more in between those two.
State process.
It's a big process.
Once we actually get them outfitted and the officers are wearing them, I'll make sure Chief P lets y'all know.
But we're, I mean, I'm excited that it's going to happen.
Chief, are they excited, your staff?
Yeah, actually, earlier in the year, when we were discussing with the officers, every single one of the officers of Oakland PD wanted body cams. Not a single one said no.
Very good. Great.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, okay, I'm done editorializing, sorry.
Real quick, you know, the big, the big projects are under transportation, which are usually the most expensive projects. And I'll go ahead and bring this up now, the Oakland Runabout Project, we've got $1 million in there for the agreement. Again, they are working on getting some additional funding from the state, so that our contribution may be less than that, which we can then put into other projects, but at this point, it's $1 million. So we've got that earmarked for when that project, and it will be about a year from now when we actually are getting close to putting that project under construction, but we've got the funding set aside and earmarked for that. Got some money in there for post-design services. We're going to do some additional turnouts off of Oakland Avenue, like we did with Broad. I think we're looking at Cross, maybe.
Cross Street.
As the next one, to kind of clean up where the dirt road comes into that avenue so that it's.
Like an apron.
It's a flood hazard.
Yeah. So I think that's the first one we've got identified, but we can do a couple of those next year. And then Star Street, when I come back on October 13th, I've got a short presentation to talk about three things, just so that we can get on the same page and start moving forward with them. That would be the, again, Star Street development on the south is going to start happening when Tractor Supply starts to move forward with their project. On the north, between the Tractor Supply property and Oakland Avenue, we're going to start the design process for that. And I'll come back and talk to you about that. So the trail, the Sadler Project, and the playgrounds are the three things I'm going to come back and talk about in October, because those will be the first three, three things that we really get moving forward on. So again, that's where we're at, and we do have some reserves for future projects, so as we get a couple of these moving forward and out of the way, we can start talking about some of the priorities that the commission might have. And then, lastly, we've got admin facilities. Again, we're looking at just doing planning on future facilities with the town, maybe doing space needs study, and looking at some of the buildings, like the Public Works Building and things that we may need to do in the future, just kind of start doing some planning with that. And then fire protection would be, we have some opportunities to do some upgrades and put some hydrants in a few places that need them. So that's the impact fee budget, it's a total of 5.3. And again, this is another big piece that would be different from last year. There's considerably more impact fees that we budgeted for this year, so that would be one of the increases. But that, again, that's planning for future infrastructure.
And impact fees, for those who are listening, are for new, not recurring projects.
Yeah. Generally, they're for capacity projects because of the growth that you're seeing.
Can't use them to repave an existing road, can't.
And there are things to improve capacity issues that you might have, or increase capacity. And then lastly, would be the Oakland Avenue Charter School budget, it's just about $5.8 million. Again, the June budget was approved based off of the last year's budget, we didn't have any of the revenue numbers. We've updated the budget, including the teacher salary increase that Governor DeSantis put into place. We did take over the BPK program, so that is part of that budget, includes some CARES Act funding that we're expecting, and also the COVID-19 expenses that we are incurring also because of the current conditions. The revenue reserves are estimated at about $385,000 for the school front. So this matches up, the last slide here matches up to the resolution of 2020-09, but you can see the total budget for the town would be $21,460,631. With that, we can go to the next slide. Oh, you found it, I'm sorry. So the resolution is 2020-09, a resolution of the Town Commission of Oakland, Florida, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, providing for separability and providing for an effective date, whereas the Town Commission of Oakland, on public hearings as required by Section 200.0065 of the Florida statute on Wednesday, September 9, 2020, and on Tuesday, September 22, 2020, whereas the Town Commission of Oakland, Florida, set forth the anticipated source of revenues and estimated appropriations for the budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, in the amount of $21,466,31, with the following breakdown, I just went over those. And so, therefore, be it resolved, the Town Commission of Oakland, that the above recitals are true and correct and are incorporated herein by this reference. The fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget is adopted, of which is attached here as to Exhibit A. All sections or parts of sections of the town code that conflict with this resolution will appeal to the extent of such conflict. The provisions of this resolution are deemed to be severable. If any section, sentence, clause, or phrase of this resolution shall for any reason be held to be invalid or unconstitutional, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining sections, sentences, clauses, and phrases of the resolution, but shall remain in effect, it being the legislative intent that this resolution shall stand notwithstanding the invalidity of any part. This resolution shall take effect upon adoption. So if you want to move forward with that, the public hearing?
Any questions or comments at the table?
Good job.
Good job, yeah.
Everybody.
Two minutes to spare.
All right. So I need a motion, please?
Make a motion, approve Resolution 2020-09.
Call second.
It's been moved in second. We do not have anybody in the audience, so anybody joining us virtually, do you have any questions or comments? Alicia, let me know if you have any hands.
Mayor, I do not see any hands.
Thank you. Bring it back to the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. A very, very well done and a great presentation.
I'm not sure, but I'm thinking she might like the presentation.
I like it.
I'm guessing.
I do love the presentation. We have one minute. We did it with one minute to spare.
Welcome, Sal.
Thank you. I apologize for being running late. Last-minute meeting, pushed, pushed, and pushed. Review, man.
You don't need no excuses, we already said it was okay.
I think is, you know, if we had work to do, we would be doing it, but we have had some really hefty agendas and a lot of work done, so I think this is a nice little break.
Well deserved.
Well deserved, especially for staff. Anyway, I am going to call the regular town commission meeting to order for September 22nd. Please stand for the pledge and the indication. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, being to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sal?
Father God, thank you once again for entrusting us with your town, the path that you gave us, your wisdom, discernment, steadfast, taking decisions for our town, best for our citizens. We say all this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Van Horn.
President.
Mr. Paul.
Here.
Mr. Raynolds.
President.
Vice Mayor Satafield.
President.
Mayor Strick.
Here.
Thank you. Any ex parte communication? Okay. We do have public forum. We do not have anybody here in the meeting hall, but if there's anybody joining us virtually that would like to speak on something that is not already on the agenda, please raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised, Alicia.
No, ma'am, I don't see any hands.
Pardon?
I don't see any hands.
Thank you. So now we come to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments, anything they want to pull out of that agenda to discuss? I do have one, and it's a really quick one for you, Alicia. With memorandum of understanding with the regional, Orange County Regional History Center, when.
Yes, ma'am.
Pardon?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Oh, okay. When do you think those interviews would begin?
I think they're ready to start as soon as we sign the agreement, because the interviews are going to be virtual, so they'll either be calling or trying to set them up via Zoom.
And are you gathering up the list of folks that we think we might want to interview? Because I think there's probably thoughts, you know, on the commission of people if you don't have, you know, just to make sure we have a comprehensive list.
Yeah, so we had a list of 40 that we started putting together.
Oh, wow, that's good.
And it was a little too much for them to start with, so we narrowed down to about 10 to start, but they do want the more comprehensive list. So if you have names you want to submit, we can definitely go ahead and send that over to them.
And we're prioritizing based on time and things like that?
Based on time and based on their goals, which are, they're really looking into black history right now, so they ask for people who could share their story. They ask for people who could share their stories, and also based on our goals with the cemetery, with the Historic American Cemetery.
I just don't, I just don't want to miss anybody
Yeah.
On the first go around, you know what I mean?
Maybe you could send us out a list of who you have so we can look it over and see if there's anyone we can think of that might not be on it, probably the easiest way.
Yeah.
Very good. Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's the only thing, I just wondered when it was, because I, that's just awesome, and I want to make sure that we capture folks as quickly as possible.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, so, any other, any other thoughts? All right, so I'll bring it back to the table for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or comments from those joining us virtually?
No, ma'am, there are no hands raised.
All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Parker, here's where your life is in jeopardy.
You know, pick the facts now.
All right, Town Manager reports, aside from what we already have seen.
Yeah, I just, I just had a couple of things. The interlatory agreement with Orange County is going to be entertained by the commission on October 13th by the county commissioners. I'll make sure I'm tuned in, I think they're still doing their meetings virtually. I sent you a a press release earlier today with the all the tree plantings that we've been doing around town, and we'll be getting that out soon. Parker and his his crew planted over 30 trees along some key areas, along Oakland Avenue and around the lift station, and replacing some trees and doing, so it looked really good. A lot of you can see from the trail, and it's, it'll be a nice add.
Are they all the same time?
No, sorry.
I think the email already went out.
I sent, you have an email, but they've got, you want to tell them what kind of trees?
Well, we've got red maple, red cedar, live oak, and magnolia, that we've planted slightly over 30 of them in four or five different areas. A couple of them are planted on private property. The the people that own the property have agreed to maintain them. It was because we took trees down adjacent to the the private property, so it's it's effectively a a town tree that they're going to maintain it.
They had some, they got some really nice live oaks, they had them staged over here at this, and they've got some really nice
The park looks really, really nice.
And Spear Park was one of the places.
There's more to go.
Very nice.
And then last thing, next coffee with the managers on October 8th.
I think those are becoming very effective.
How many did you get last time?
I don't remember, but it was a good conversation.
Yeah.
It might have only been like six or seven, but it was good conversation.
That's the important part.
Right, and it really has engaged some people who are interested, really interested in how the town goes forward, which I think is great. And this is an education for them.
Very good.
Very good. No, it was a great idea, so it's
And it's not us, the politicians, who can't be trusted, you know, telling them these things.
Well, you must not be talking about me.
Yeah. No, but I think it does help that it comes from an administrator.
No, I'm with you. I like the idea.
One day, I'm going to learn to be better about not saying exactly what I think.
Yeah. I've been here a long time.
All right, so Steve, Parker, Chief?
Today, I was trying to get into the Water Management District Board meeting, unable to get to that, so I don't know if we got our money today or not, so.
Okay, well, we will see.
I'm good.
Okay, good, that's, that's the right answer. Sal?
I'm good.
Sure?
Yes.
Rick?
I'm good.
Joseph?
Just one thing, the the man's, the Presbyterian, we're starting to do the man's breakfast again.
Oh, good.
Virtually, rather. Dennis Baum is running it, but Jim Gordon mentioned, and you you know about this, you guys have a, the Presbyterian Church has a door, an old door, original door of the church, old church, they want to donate it to the
We have an original stained glass window that's a permanent, is permanently installed at the Heritage Center, but no one has talked to me about a door, but they want to talk to us. That's great.
I told him to call you.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, he hasn't, I haven't heard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
But that's great.
You said the door from the original church.
Yeah. People still mourn that, and it, they mourn more the second church than the original church.
Oh, okay.
Which is probably where the door came from.
Oh, okay.
Because it was, they called it the Little Yellow Church, and it was a brick church, and they had to tear it down in the 70s, and it, people still
I was just going to ask what year it was.
He didn't say, he just was trying to, well, he knew about the center, and he was, you know, he had something that he wanted to to
Sure. No, I had not, nobody, nobody has talked to me about it.
Did you change in the 70s?
So, okay, so this is my loosely based understanding, is the corner lot on pension and tub, that's where that tree fell through the house, that was the original site of the original Presbyterian Church.
Oh, okay.
Then they built, I think that's when they moved and built the Little Yellow Church, where the church stands today, and it was just one of those sweet little brick churches, you know, just the sweetest looking church. And I, you know, they just outgrew it, and they felt like they could not add on, improve it to where that, what they needed, so they made that very difficult decision to tear it down. So there are artifacts floating around town from that church, which is where we got the stained glass window, was from that that yellow church, and
The second one.
Second one.
No, that was like around 1917, wasn't it? Somewhere in that range?
Yeah, that was one of the, that's when that
The original.
The church was built.
Yeah, and so they tore the Little Yellow Church down, I think in the very early 70s, and built what you see today.
That was right behind me.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so I think, who built Town Center?
Wow. Everybody told me that Mayor Andrew Lee built it.
Town Center? No.
No. I don't remember.
They're all
Can you tell me?
Is it McCree Construction?
McCree.
McCree, that's who did it, yeah.
McCree, and I think
When I heard it, I get it, but
I think McCree built that church.
Oh, wow.
I think.
Yeah, they've been around for a long time.
Yeah, and they were so, and here I am threatening people with their life, they were so funny when they did the presentations for the RFPs for this Town Center rebuild, it was father and son junior, and so they would call each other by their first names, and it was just so cute, you know, professional, dad, son.
Yeah.
So anyway, anything else?
Yeah, I was like, that's all.
Okay, so yeah, if Jim calls, you know, I hadn't heard about it.
They will certainly
Yeah.
And that, again, that door probably would be from that second one, the Little Yellow Church.
Yeah, from the Little Yellow Church.
We got Little Yellow Church, we had a little white house.
Uh-huh.
We have cute names here.
Yeah.
Yep.
That was it.
How about you?
I'll pass it on to you.
The only thing that I would like to mention, just to make sure that we've covered it, everywhere we can think to cover it, is the RFP for the concession for the Heritage Center is out, it's on the town website, it's also on
Called Demand Star.
Demand Star, but, you know, if anywhere we can put it, I don't know if the newsletter will go out in time to add it to that.
Yeah, we can look at it.
You know, and, you know, and it just, it, I would love to make sure that, you know, it's widely communicated.
And bids are out until October 21?
Yeah, October 21st.
Aren't you having a work session or something, too?
We're doing a a non-mandatory creed meeting at 10:30 next Thursday, so if anybody wants to come look at the space, they can do that.
Good. Great. But that was the only thing that I had. I think you guys have done some great work, and I really appreciate it, and with that, Joseph?
Our hearts and minds are satisfied, it is now 7:14, that's adjourned.
No, wait, a minute, I can
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, shit.